We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on March 2, 2021 to order at 3:00 PM. Joining me today online are Mayor Pro Tim Hector Sabido, Councilmember Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Josh Porterood, and Councilmember Kelly Palmer, as well as Councilmember Jim Holmes. City staff online today are Bradley Ford, our city manager, Jennifer Ritchie, our city attorney, and Esmeralda Hudson, our city secretary. Please join me for a moment of silence and today, please keep in careful mind the family of Tom Salome, who passed away on Friday, February 26th. A Waco businessman who was deeply, who deeply cared for our community. Tom Salome graduated from Waco High School and attended Baylor University. He's a veteran of the United States Air Force. He was a successful Waco community and business leader who is motivated to make Waco a better place for children and adults. He was known for making things happen, served on numerous boards and service organizations, and was instrumental in raising funds to open the doors Miller Family YMCA in East Waco and leading the way for Waco's economic development. He was also known as a servant leader and one of the most philanthropic members of our community. His life of service and giving touched every facet of our community and his legacy can be seen throughout Waco. So please again, remember his family during this time. Now, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. On March 16, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective on March 16, 2020 until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing for as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public attending in person. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The audio is also being recorded. The video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the governor and attorney general, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however, that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comments on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to speak or submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to register with the city secretary's office by 1:00 PM today. Individuals who registered to speak on an agenda item must limit their comments to three minutes. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items speakers wish to address. We will now recess the regular session and convene the work session with a report from our city manager Bradley Ford.
Thanks, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I don't have any changes on the agenda today, and but I do have a few employee recognitions. And the first one, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to you and have you recognize an important leader in our community.
Great. Today, we get to honor our judge, Judge Taylor, our municipal judge. Judge Taylor is a proud graduate of Lorena High School and Baylor University and Baylor Law School. He began his legal career as an assistant district attorney for the 81st Judicial District of Texas near San Antonio. Afterwards, he was hired by Art Pertile as an assistant city attorney for the city of Waco. And after nine years in that office, Mayor Dupuy and the Waco City Council appointed him as judge of the Waco Municipal Court in 2010. Over the years, Judge Taylor has worked to ensure that the municipal court is an accessible venue for all citizens to contest citations and exercise their constitutional rights. He strives to foster an environment where all persons are treated with dignity and respect. In his spare time, Judge Taylor has taught constitutional law to high school students and coached high school mock trial teams. And finally, he feels exceptionally blessed to be married to his wife for 20 years. Her name is Maria, and he's the dad of two incredible children, Benjamin and Annie. Judge Taylor, we're just so thankful for your excellence that you bring to the court. You, over the years, I've seen you really strive to be excellent, to be just, to make sure that Waco is a safer place and that your court is a court where individuals know that justice is going to be served, where accessibility is going to be prioritized. And you just try to do right in every step of the way. I see you trying to do the right thing and be a good leader for our community. And so we're thankful for that. Thank you for your service to our community for these, for these many years. Again, 20 years of service for the city of Waco is very impressive.
Mayor Mink, I know you all have lots of important work ahead of you today. And I, for you to pause and take just a moment to acknowledge the work of our court in the 20 years I've had with the city, I really appreciate that. I'm very thankful, privileged to have lived in our community, raised a family here, and enjoyed just this wonderful organization, serving our city, shoulder to shoulder with you all. It really is a privilege. And I thank you again, each mayor and all the councilmembers for just taking a moment here. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may add, as someone who has supervised third-year law students who try cases in Judge Taylor's courtroom, I want to echo all of your comments and that I find him to be a wonderfully ethical conscientious judge who is concerned just as much of the rights of the accused as the rights of the state. And it has been an honor to appear in front of him in his courtroom, and my students have learned a lot from him. So thank you, Judge, and it is an honor to have worked with you.
Councilmember Borderwood, likewise, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Judge Taylor. We're so grateful and thankful for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, 20 years. Congrats, Judge. Our, our next employee recognition that I have doesn't, doesn't quite have 20 years with us. Actually, she's on her second day. I'd like to welcome and introduce our new director of public health, LaShonda Mallory Horn. The council's well aware, she's, she's joined us as our director of the Waco McLennan County Public Health District, and we're just so excited to have her. She's joined us on the screen here now, I see. Most recently, of course, LaShonda served the residents of Northeast Texas for the past four years, working for the Texas Department of State Health Services, Public Health Region Four and Five North. In 2003, she completed a bachelor's degree in health studies from Texas Women's University and later received a master's degree of public health from AT Steel University in 2011. And so she's a decorated professional, and for the last 15 years, she's really dedicated herself, both in her professional work and also her service life, to, to help make the healthy choice, the easy choice for people throughout Northeast Texas. And I'm just so glad that we're going to get to see her do that now here in Waco and McLennan County. So council, if you'll welcome LaShonda to our team today. Thank you.
Welcome. We're so glad to have you. It's going to be, I know that you're jumping in to a role that's in, or in a pandemic, a public health crisis. And so to come in in this moment, I know is going to be challenging, but I know that you're up for that challenge. And I know that our city is so excited to have your leadership in this moment. So welcome. I'm excited to have you in Waco. We want Waco to be your home and for you to feel welcome to here in every way in the midst of a very chaotic season. So welcome aboard the team. We look forward to working with you. You know, you've already been on several Zoom calls, even though you're just getting kicked off here. So even, even before you had started working, you were, you were already helping us out on stuff. So we're so excited to have you here. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. With that, I'd like to invite Larry Halsey to give the Halsey Report.
All righty, let me share my screen right quick for you, and we will get going here.
After the arrival of the structural steel, progress has been picking up at the fire station number six and the fire administration building at the corner of 25th and Grim, the site of the former 25th Street Theater. The steel framing for both structures is in place, and the decking is also starting. Once the steel framing and decking is complete, the interior walls will start going up. Site work continues, and crews will soon begin setting forms for curbs in the parking lot. The original completion date is scheduled for June the 2nd, 2021. With the new improvements at Trailblazer Park almost complete, Bicycle World has generously donated a bicycle repair station to the park and the neighboring Cotton Belt Trail. The repair station provides features such as tools to repair bike tires, chains, and general bicycle parts. The station will complement updates to the park, which include a new pavilion, playground, lighting, soccer goals, and family-friendly disc golf holes. When fencing and lighting installations are complete, a virtual ribbon cutting will be held to celebrate the new park improvements. The Texas Department of Transportation is preparing for a major traffic shift on I-35 through Waco as a $341 million construction project reaches a key milestone and marks a halfway point for the project. Tech Todd will complete reconstruction of the new southbound main lanes, a significant achievement in the effort to improve I-35 through the heart of Texas. Following a delay caused by the winter weather, in the next week or so, traffic should be shifted to the newly completed lanes, allowing Tech Todd to reconstruct the northbound lanes. The permanent southbound exit ramps at Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and University Parks, Fourth and Fifth Streets to downtown will all open. Once all traffic is shifted, crews will begin removing several of the northbound I-35 overpasses. For the latest information on I-35 expansion project, go to my35.org/Waco. Another great partnership between the city of Waco and Baylor University was a big success as the state's COVID vaccine allocation to Waco McLennan County Public Health District was distributed through a well-organized vaccination clinic at McLean Stadium on February the 4th through the 6th. 1,500 Moderna shots were given to people throughout the county who met the Department of State Health Services Phase 1A and 1B requirements. Another shot clinic was scheduled on February 11th through 13th at the Waco Contention Center, but was cut short due to the bad weather coming in. Those who had appointments for their second dose were rescheduled first, followed by those with the second dose who were supposed to come in during February the 15th and the 20th. Almost every day during the winter weather shutdown, dedicated city staff were making hundreds of calls, many from their homes, to reschedule the second dose shots. Just a reminder that all of the latest vaccine information is always available at covidwaco.com. On Saturday, February 13, Solid Waste Services and Keep Waco Beautiful were scheduled to host a city council District Two cleanup. Due to the cold weather, it was canceled and rescheduled for Wednesday, March 3. Council District One cleanup will be coming up on March 13. And on March 20, the cities of Waco, Elmead, Hewitt, Lacey Lakeview, and Woodway are working together to provide their residents the opportunity to properly dispose of hazardous products that can't go into the landfill by holding a household hazardous waste day for their residents. The big news is the longest freezing cold spell in Waco's history that had a grip on Waco's citizens for 205 consecutive hours, taking temperatures to below zero. Thousands of residents, businesses, and many city facilities were without power for days. The city opened two warming centers and several churches and nonprofits opened their doors to welcome people without power. Throughout the entire week, city crews were busy protecting the safety of its citizens by closing streets, correcting signs at dark intersections, canceling trash pickup, and repairing numerous water main breaks. Later in the week, things shifted to hundreds of water leaks in homes, businesses, commercial sprinkler systems, and all across the city, causing concerns that could result in a boil water notice and greatly impact the city's ability to provide proper fire protection. Citizens of Waco followed the appeal by the mayor and Mayor Pro Tim in video messages that they produced, asking citizens to greatly reduce water use and to check for leaks. This combined with a well-managed, robust water processing and distribution system, we were able to avoid the critical need to require citizens to boil their water, something that would have been really difficult when you have no power. Thanks to so many community-minded citizens and businesses like Coca-Cola, who donated 125 pallets of water that was distributed to anyone who needed it on Saturday and Sunday, February 20th and 21st. The Waco McLennan County Office of Emergency Management is leading the recovery process for those who continue to need assistance with winter storm damage. Our website has resources for McLennan County residents, as well as donation forms, and a link to the Texas Individual Assessment Form that anyone with storm damage needs to complete in order for our county to receive all the benefits we're entitled to.
That completes my report, but I did want to credit the Waco Tribune Herald for a number of those good quality snow pictures as well. So that completes my report.
Thanks, Larry. Appreciate that.
Bradley, I just had one quick comment on it. It was a great report, Larry. Appreciate it. What do you want to say on the Trailblazer Park Bicycle Repair Station? A couple of weeks ago, I was getting calls to see if that could be converted to a snowmobile repair station. But anyway, no, not true. But so I'd like to see those improvements out there. I mean, it's so exciting. And we had a lot of calls saying, when is all this going to be finished up? And it looks like we're getting very close. And I appreciate all the work that that staff has done and that Parks and Rec has done on getting that Trailblazer Park lined up. And there are a lot of other good reports in there too about COVID, how we're doing that and moving with the snowmageddon and all that. And we kind of talked about that in our last special meeting, but great report as usual, Larry. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Holmes. Mayor and council, I would like to follow up on that report with a third and final employee recognition. And it's actually for Larry Halsey. After 22 years of dedicated service to the city of Waco, Larry let me know yesterday that he's planning to retire as of April 30. And just want to spend a minute acknowledging him. You know, he's led the department through many transitions over the years as communications has evolved and become increasingly digital and really led the efforts to bring more and more citizens to the table when it comes to public information. He, he transformed our city cable channel into really an award-winning and nationally recognized channel. He, he brought the creation and maintenance of our website in-house. And he's aired, at this point, I think, more than 800 weekly public service radio programs. It's called City Talk, which is in its 17th year. And many more things certainly that we could acknowledge about Larry. But Larry, I'd like to be the first to say thank you for your service and, and really congratulations on your upcoming retirement.
Thank you very much. And again, the best thing I can think of, I put together an amazing team of very professional communicators. And without them, as is always the case, it's a team effort. And that's part of the thing I will miss the most. But you know, I'm, I'm not the youngest of the persons in here, but technology is. I mean, you know, I've outgrown some of the technologies, but I'm thankful that the opportunity is, is there coming up now with, per power of the budget and a few things. It just made good sense. So anyway.
Well, this, go ahead, Hector.
I was, I'm sorry, Councilmember Holmes, I was just going to say, first of all, Larry, congratulations. Everyone who is in the communication or media field knows the, knows the name Larry Halsey. Even as I have traveled to other parts of the state and your counterparts in different municipalities and cities know Larry and know his talent, know the potential, know his dedication. And so Larry, I just, I'm just going to say you're going to be truly missed, but you have earned this by far. You have been an exceptional leader in our city. As, as communications to me is very near and dear to my heart. And to make sure that we're doing it to all of our citizens, and you have done a phenomenal job. So thank you for your years of dedication to the city. We are definitely going to miss you, but please, please don't be a stranger because we still want to pick your brain about a few things. So congratulations again.
This is Holmes, and Larry, I appreciate you so much, as you know. And, and I know a lot of people know this, but yeah, Larry was a District Five councilman. So I follow in his footsteps from, from the, I mean, excellent job that he did as a councilman. He's had a couple of careers too, as a businessman in Waco, a successful businessman. And just what he's done at, at the cable channel is just phenomenal. And the career that he's had there, I mean, he, he's done, he's done everything. Just a few things, he said 800 City Talk, that doesn't hold the candle to all the history shows that he's done. And I'm just such a fan of watching those, and it's like, it's captivating to me because I think I've seen the one on interurban railroads maybe 30 times, you know? I can't, I can't turn it off because it's so interesting to me. But anyway, just the, you know, anything like a tornado from the 50s, Larry's done it. Interurban railroads, Larry's done it. The one where there's nightclubs in the 1960s, you know, Larry's done it. The one where you get a sitting councilman to dress up like Doc and do a commercial for recycling, Larry's done it. You know, he's done, he's done a lot of things there. And just the depth and the breadth of the production that you've done in the history that you've kept alive for Waco is just fascinating to me. And you know, Waco history 24/7, keeping not only the history part of it, but like I say, the current programming part of it, where you keep, keeping the communication open, where everybody knows what's going on. We've all had an opportunity to, to be on various programs on, on your, on your station. But anyway, thank you, Larry. And yeah, you're, you're still in my district. So yeah, we'll, we'll be talking. Thank you so much for what you've done for, for Waco.
Larry may be a District Five former councilman, but he is a District Four boy and grew up in the heart of D4. And Larry, I have just so enjoyed getting to work alongside you the last few months. It has been so much fun to show up at city events and us both be wearing our matching masks and elbowing each other and being happy. And you have just done a phenomenal job, particularly in the compounding crises of 2020 and 2021, of leading our community, of offering really clear, incredibly helpful of-the-moment information. You slept in your office during the snowstorm in order to ensure that residents had access to crucial information that they needed. And that's just so reflective of the huge heart and deep commitment that you have to your team and to our community and to your work. And like my councilmembers have said, you will be deeply missed and you have deeply earned this rest. So I hope that your retirement is full of rejuvenation and sweet times with your family and that you get some good time to celebrate the phenomenal career and impact that you've had on our city. So thank you for all of your service.
Larry, I echo all of those sentiments by my colleagues here on city council. And you know, I, I think of you as, as a Waco broadcasting legend, as a Waco resident for over 20 years, your voice is synonymous for me with the city's operations and with city government. And I can't imagine not hearing your voice as city news is delivered. And it's just been a great continuity over the last two decades of everything you've done for the city. I know that you've, you were a leader as a small businessman, you were a leader on the plan commission, on city council, and have been just such a dedicated servant. So I thank you for everything. It's been a pleasure getting to know you in the brief time that I've been on council here, and it was an absolute honor to be interviewed by you on City Talk. And so thank you for everything that you've done for our city.
Halsey, you know, I had to say it, you know, I had to say it. My gosh, there, my councilmembers have said everything that I wanted to say, you know, but you and I go back a little bit further, probably, you know, just because of the nature of, of my life and, and, and with mom and, you know, and you can actually say, I left the city of Waco having survived both of those Jackson plays. But the depth and breadth of your skill and, and, and heart and compassion that you've brought to this job is in just, is, is boundless. And we are ever grateful for everything that you left on the, on the table and on the floor. People who are creators, people who are communicators have to give it all because our world depends on it. And it is incredibly important that, that you blessed us and even in, in the third iteration of whatever it is that you were doing, to give us you. And so we're ever grateful for, for the impact that you've made on our city through all of your innovation and our communication efforts, the legacy that you leave, and just that little, that little extra mark and that, that little extra piece of love that you've left with us. So I appreciate you greatly. I miss you much, but you'll be ever busy. See, don't, don't, don't sleep because the Hector put you on a committee and, and, and it'll be all over again. But we appreciate you so much.
The, the bad part about going last on this stuff is that everybody's already said everything so well and better than I could ever say it. But Larry, I just think you leave such an incredible, rich legacy. Your heart for our city, your heart for our community, your energy to, to just communicate to our citizens because you understand the value of that and you know that an informed community is a better community. And whether that be history or an urgent piece of information about conserving water, all of that information matters and it makes our city stronger and better. So thank you for the energy, the creativeness, the innovation that you implemented all these years. You are the voice of Waco. Your voice is a legend. And I know that, as already has been mentioned, I know that this community isn't, isn't done getting the benefits of your passion, your service, and your leadership. And I know that although there might be a shift here, I just, I know that you're going to continue to serve this city so well because that's in your character, and we're so thankful for that. And I just commend you for an incredible legacy and want to just thank you for your friendship. I want to thank you for, you know, when I think about Larry, I think about how, you know, my kids' names and you know my kids' ages, and you, you have just high value on family and people and individuals. And it's from that space that I think you injected the heart and the energy into your work. And so I just want to thank you for that. And I'm so excited for the future and just so thankful for your service.
Thank all of you all for those comments. Very, very treasured. Y'all are special and have the same dedication you all just described in the way you're serving. So maybe 30 or 40 or more years from now, you'll be looking back at the same way I am, with great fondness of working together as a team. Thank you so much.
Larry, thank you for everything. And councilmembers, thank you for those, those kind comments. I, I know, I know the public and Larry's family are watching and will certainly appreciate those. On, on our agenda today, we do have two informal reports. The first is IR 2021-125, which is an update on COVID-19 and vaccine implementation. This IR is provided as a part of our regular updates every couple of weeks on COVID-19. We are in Week Eight of vaccinations, and our current allocation unfortunately remains at 1,500 doses per week, first doses per week. As the state of Texas, State Health Services outlines in their Vaccine Hub expectations, we're committed to continuing to distribute those vaccines quickly to all eligible 1A and 1B individuals with an intentional focus surrounding equitable distribution.
City manager Ford McComan on this IR real quick, please. First of all, I want to say thank you for the report. I do want to acknowledge and, and really praise the Health District. I was looking at the numbers on how we're distributing and, and to whom. And just last weekend alone, I was noticing it was reported that almost 5,300 vaccines were performed by the Health District, which is phenomenal. Kudos to the staff, kudos to every volunteer, all the partnerships that the Health District has created. Just, just to see that many vaccines going out for my Health District is insane, to be completely honest with you. And I don't know how they do it. I don't know when our employees sleep, but they are knocking these, and keep in mind, this is in three days, not even the entire week, but in three days. So just to show you the type of activity and work that's coming out of our Health District. Also to see that the county has reached a 15% vaccination rate. I know there, there are many, let me rephrase that. There are some places in, in, in our city, in our county that are making the vaccine happen, but I also know that the Health District is a forerunner and getting these vaccines out. So I really want to congratulate on the success that has been transpiring over the last weekend. And keep in mind, this is with a snowstorm that hit in the middle of February. And making sure, I believe Larry mentioned his report, making sure that, you know, the call center, we're, we're calling those that had an appointment scheduled that weekend, rescheduling them, et cetera, things like that. And so I just really want to say thank you to the Health District. I mean, I know we say this over every, every time we have councilmen. thank you to the Health District. I mean, I know we say this over every, every time we have council meeting, but we really cannot minimize the work that's taking place in our Health District. One thing I do want to follow up with this report is, and, and you know, this can come in the form of an IR or something like that. But I do want us to discuss and really explore. Um, I know there are some statewide mandates, but here locally, how are we going to reach our community members that are homebound with vaccines? Um, I think that's something that we really, uh, should discuss. And, and like I said, I know there's some state ideas and mandates, and I've even heard of some local talks. But I, I would love for us to really get that message out of, of the city's plan or the Health District's plan and, and getting the vaccine to our, to our community members that are homebound. But other than that, thank you so much for the report.
I would also like to make a couple of quick notes on this. I really appreciate the addition, uh, this week of the breakdown of our, uh, population by racial demographic in the county and the city. I think that provides a helpful contrast. The, um, there's always the yin and yang. So on the one hand, um, as a social worker, I feel deeply grieved seeing the breakdown of these numbers, uh, in comparison to our racial demographics. And we've spoken to this on previous council meetings, how we imagine this is both, um, an access issue, a fear issue. There are all sorts of compounding historical, social, economic, transportation, um, factors that result in who is able and who is willing, uh, to receive a vaccine. But want to note that our Health District, like Mayor Potem said, has just done a Herculean effort to get vaccines uh, into people's arms to utilize every possible ounce of the vaccine that are, um, coming in the vials that we're receiving. We are one of two hubs in our county, so I wonder if we're able to receive, um, any sort of breakdown along similar racial demographic lines from Providence, who is the other hub. And then want to make a quick note for residents watching at home that even though Providence and the Health District are the two hubs for our community, there are, um, vaccines available through HEB and through the national pharmacies. So continue to look at covidwaco.com that has access to each of those information or each of those data sites. But encouraged to see this piece. I think often when we think about our governments, we want transparency, but we also want good, good data that's telling us a happy story. And so while all of this data might not be encouraging, it's encouraging to me that it's transparent or ring open. And we're continuing to tell this story week by week and trying to move in the direction to get a vaccine into everybody that's interested in receiving it.
Just really quickly and, and follow up to what Councilmember Palmer said. Is there any way that we can get the, um, demographic information from the other hub? I know it'd probably be more difficult to get it from the private industries that are offering vaccinations, i.e. the, the stores and national pharmacies. But, um, the state information, uh, for Ascension Providence should, it should be available. Yes?
I'm going to ask, uh, I know Deputy City Manager Emerson has been, um, engaged in conversations along these lines. I'd ask her to provide any, any guidance to the council at this point.
Yes. So, um, I took a couple of questions and I'll, I'll go back to Councilmember, um, Sabido on the access to the homebound. Through the Equitable, um, Vaccination Distribution Group that we have. We have had conversations with Debbie King, with, um, Mills on Wheels. And so there is information that has actually been developed in conjunction with the Strategic Communications Group that we are dispersing to those individuals, um, that are homebound. One, to educate and make sure that they are aware of how to register for the vaccine. Two, we are, um, working to coordinate a way to do mobile clinics. But also the governor actually announced, I believe it was, um, last Thursday or Friday about saving, uh, the program, the state program for saving our seniors that will work in conjunction with, um, entities such as Mills on Wheels to get vaccine to the homebound. But it is definitely on our radar and, um, our ways and how we will, um, work through that. So it's not to us yet, but we will still work through that process because that is of concern for us as well. Um, and then also the, um, Councilmember Palmer, in regards to the, the age demographics, we definitely will, can include that information in. We can get that information for you and include, again, including that in the IR. And there are several, ensuring that there are several ways for people to access and know about the other, um, entities that are providing, um, vaccines as well. And then Councilwoman Fairfield, I missed your last question.
About the other, um, hub, Ascension Providence's breakdown, I don't know, are they just, you have to go to the state, state dashboard and perhaps you can find it there?
Well, we, we will have, um, conversations with them. We ha, we do have an agreement in place for, with other entities such as family health centers so that we can, um, because we know that they serve a, a huge portion of our vulnerable population. And so, um, we do want to make sure that we are working with them to provide as much data as we can.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments, Deidra and council members. Our second informal report is IR 2021 dash 126, which, um, is an informal report introducing the, uh, the council and the public to, uh, a strategic communications evaluation that the city's starting up, uh, this month, later this month, actually. This project is a, an important step to further a best-in-class communications approach that, that really seeks to bring in and align our communications efforts with our mission, vision and values. As well as, um, you know, seek to intentionally serve all of our residents as well. We'll be engaging internal and external stakeholders in this project. And I anticipate following up with the council in about 90 days with, uh, with an action plan.
This is really exciting. I think that, uh, as we just mentioned, um, ensuring that our citizens are, um, informed is critical and a high priority of this council. And so injecting increased strategy in that is, is a great step.
Mayor, I, I completely agree with you. And, and once again, thank you for this informal report, uh, City Manager Ford. I would like to, um, note and encourage that as we move forward with our strategic communication plans from the city that we, um, really encounter our stakeholders in the Spanish-speaking community. Um, I think, you know, that being very important that we, you know, nearly 20% of our, uh, city's demographic is Spanish dominant speakers. And so I think it's very important that, that we get those key people, those stakeholders, those nonprofits, those organizations that are really on the grounds with, uh, the Spanish-speaking community and that we involve them in the process. But, uh, thank you so much for the report.
This is Holmes. Uh, I'll follow, um, Councilman Sabido there, um, in complimenting you on, yeah, getting this on track. But I just want to point out that, that it made a big impression on me. I'm a big, you know, read the Waco trip every morning. The trip had a very good comment in there this weekend that our communication, talking about City Manager Ford, Deputy City Manager, uh, Emerson and Mayor, Mayor Meek, was quote unquote, a textbook case of how to communicate in an emergency, uh, unquote. Which I was so proud to read that. And, uh, and, and we already have, it's a high priority to this council and this, and this staff to have best-in-class communication, transparency. And that doesn't mean sit around and talking, talking, you know, just talking. This communication leads to, uh, you know, action, efficiency, productivity, uh, and, and, uh, for, for the taxpayer dollar. So, uh, the, the effort to already do what we highly value and then make it even better, I, I think it's, it's great. And I just wondered, I didn't want that quote to pass us by here because that was so telling. And again, tying back to the emergency that we had, but you guys are good not only in emergencies, I would put, uh, you guys are textbook case all the time and day to day. So, uh, I, I appreciate the work you're doing and, and the efforts to get better and better. I guess this, uh, admirable. Thanks.
In, uh, agenda review earlier today, uh, Assistant City Manager Holt was talking about this idea of language of, um, next in class. So of, a step ahead of, uh, best in class to next in class. And I think that Spanish component that Mayor Potem is speaking about really is that next in class, uh, piece of how do we offer all of our social media posts, our, um, press releases, all the information that is offered through official city channels in English and Spanish. I had a number of constituents reach out to me as, uh, each of us on council were pushing information in the midst of snowbit 19. And there was both a constant ask for, uh, communication in Spanish and a number of residents offered to translate my post into Spanish. And so that need is so felt right now. So just wanted to, uh, amplify and get under what Mayor Potem was saying. And think that this is a really important moment as we're reevaluating to, to, uh, just make an entire commitment to, um, bilingual access.
Thank you, City Manager Ford and Assistant City Manager Holt for this, this IR. One of the things that I wanted to echo is that I think it is imperative for us as we expand our communication and, and continue to give the excellent service that you all have done, um, so well here lately. I mean, as a whole, and especially here lately, is that how, how we communicate. A lot of times we talk about deficiencies in deserts and you know, everybody immediately thinks food desert. Uh, but I want you to give your mind's eye to something that is considered a news desert and how different communities receive information as we go into the nuts and bolts of how we communicate with one another. You know, is this community, uh, social media forward-facing? You know, uh, Councilmember Holmes mentioned he reads the newspaper every day. But, uh, you know, does everybody? How do they receive their news? How are they receiving their information? Is it, is it, which form of media is the strongest and we need to specifically understand where, you know, um, uh, where and how people are receiving their news information? So that way we don't miss anybody. Yeah. I'm big on no wrong door. So there is not a place where you won't be able to get the information that you need as long as we know how you receive your information and how you process your information. So I'd just like to add that, um, as something that's top of mind as we go into this, this deep dive into how we communicate with our constituents.
Thank you for those comments, council members. There's, um, much to be gained there. I do want to highlight something though. This, this concept that Ryan mentioned of moving from best-in-class to next-in-class, I think he might've stolen that from a, from a candidate recently that we were interviewing. So we'll have to talk to him about borrowing these cliches, sounds like.
Sounds like he was in good hands.
Very next in class.
Very next in class of him. Um, oh, okay. He told me he gave credit. So good job, Ryan. Um, today, we do have three ordinances on the agenda today. The first is ordinance 2021 dash 141, which is an emergency reading to authorize the election of unopposed candidates for the positions of Councilmember District Two and Councilmember District Four and canceling the May 1st, 2021 joint general election for those two positions. The remaining two ordinances on our agenda are second readings. And if there's, um, no further questions, that concludes my report.
Um, this is Holmes. Just as, are you going to go through the resolutions or there weren't that many, right? There were no highlights?
No, but please, if you, if you have some, please.
Just, you know, a couple that just jumped out at me since there weren't, there were so few. I thought I'd bring up the, the one about, uh, where we have Charlton State, um, helping out, uh, with the, with the Public Health District. I just think that's a cool, uh, program. I know we've had MCC in there. We've, uh, wherever we can get help and, uh, and people who want to do it. I, I like the fact that we identified a need, you know, found a, a source, a resource to help. And then really turned an idea into a plan, into an implemented, you know, program. I think it's, this is great. I, I really like seeing things like that. The other one I wanted to just highlight are the, this, the, uh, utility work that we're doing on. The, the community is going to hear more about this mall-to-mall project over the next couple, three years and the safety issues there. And, uh, it's a pretty big project, um, fixing the frontage roads on the, from the Richland Mall to the, to the, uh, uh, the interstate basically, and getting that all shaped up. Anyway, early work done on that for utility projects there. Just, uh, that's going to be in the, that's going to be in the community conversation here over the next few years. That's very short, uh, number of resolutions there. So, so the only interesting ones I could find there, Bradley. Good.
Well, those are good highlights, council member. All right.
Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? We do have a speaker card for resolution 135. So the consent agenda will include resolutions 2021 dash 132 through resolutions 2021 dash 140, with the exception of 135. I will now ask our city manager to introduce our first work session.
Thanks, Mayor. We'll start off actually with work session 2021 dash 128, which is our discussion of planning public hearing agenda items. And that'll be led by Director of Development Services, Clint Peters.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Let me get my shared, uh, screen shared real quick. So we do just have the, uh, the one public hearing during, dealing with our subdivision plats. Uh, we have, uh, three plats, uh, this meeting. The first one is the final plat of the Crossland Edition, uh, in the ETJ. This is a new subdivision out in the Axel area of our ETJ. 26 acres, uh, being proposed to be broken out into, uh, eight lots, uh, along Wood Lake and Lane and Wood Street, uh, in, in the community of Axel. These lots have frontage on existing, uh, county roads and have access to Axel Water Supply Company water. And so there's no infrastructure needed for these lots. They all range in size from, and the smallest being about 1.2 acres to over four acres in size. And Plan Commission did, uh, recommend approval of this plat when no conditions. And the next plat is the final plat and construction plans of the Cowan Village Edition, the PUD Phase Two. Uh, this is a, a new residential subdivision that is being built, uh, out along Richie Road Corridor near Panther Way and Chapel Road, uh, in West Waco. Uh, you can see on the aerial, uh, phase one, uh, is, uh, currently under construction. They're actually finishing that up. And you'll start seeing some houses go up, uh, if they hadn't already started. Uh, and then this area in yellow is the proposed phase two. Uh, it is a 22 acres in size, uh, and consists of 56 lots. Uh, and you can see it on this map. This is their, uh, full, uh, build-out map. You can see that hatched area is the phase one that's already been constructed. And then the area we're talking about today is, uh, phase two. The lots are originally planned for, uh, 65 foot wide lots. And they have, uh, increased those to 85 feet, uh, just based on, uh, market trends in the area. And it also does include some detention area and green space, um, uh, for the HOA. A, a large facility, amenities facility was built in phase one that includes this wind pool. No, uh, major conditions on this one. And Plan Commission did recommend approval with no conditions. Let me see the layout here. And then our last plat is the preliminary plat of Hunter's Creek Edition. This is a, a new subdivision proposed out in ETJ, not too far from Cowan Village. Uh, this is, uh, see our, the blue line here is our city limits. Uh, and then Chapel Road, uh, coming this way, and then Old Arena Road is here. Uh, this is 167 acres, uh, proposed, uh, proposed 119 lots. This is actually in our ETJ, so it, uh, does not have, uh, city utilities, utilities except for water. We do serve that area, uh, with water. That was a, a area that used to be served by the City Hewitt that we took over the system about 10 years ago. Uh, so we do serve it with water. Uh, there is no sewer in the area, so they will be using, uh, septic systems. So all of the lots are, are an acre in size of plus. Um, and then you can see, uh, the main access is off Old Arena Road. So they have been working with, uh, tech stop. There's a tech stop facility. So they've been working with them, uh, through a traffic impact analysis to make sure that the access points uh, do not have negative impacts on Old Arena Road. No, no conditions on this one. Plan Commission recommended approval of it. And that is all three of the plats we have.
All right. Any, any council questions on those? If not, Clint, don't go far because you've also got our next work session, which I'll introduce now. It's a work session 2021 dash 127, a discussion of short-term rentals. Clint, um, will be providing an overview to the council. I think you'll find helpful. It'll, it'll really talk about what's happened since our, um, short-term rental ordinance was adopted in the fall of 2017. And talk about the benefits and potential concerns of that process as well. It'll, it'll give the, an opportunity for the staff It'll, it'll give the, an opportunity for the staff and council to discuss options to amend the short-term rental regulations. So Clint, will you take us away?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Bradley. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Make sure I open the right one here. As Bradley mentioned, we did, we did want to have a discussion with the council about short-term rentals. As y'all are aware, we see these coming to council every, every month, usually several, for special permit applications. So we thought it was a good time to take a step back and look at the ordinance, kind of take a snapshot to see how it's working, and then talk about maybe some potential changes to it. And we did want to start off with the background on how we got to this point with the ordinance. As many of y'all know, about four or five years ago, Waco really became a tourist destination. We were on the map for visitors and tourism. At the same time, the, a lot of the home-share rental online platforms were becoming very popular, Airbnb, Homestay, several of those. And so it was a big convergence happened all at once where we started seeing a lot of short-term rentals popping up in our city. Our, our ordinance at the time did have some requirements in it, but really didn't address some of the new tech, the new trends in the home-share capabilities, online home-share platforms. So council did direct staff to work on a comprehensive ordinance. And so in 2016, we did put together an advisory committee to review the existing ordinance and then make recommendations to council on how to move forward with a new ordinance. And so we did put that committee together. It was comprised of three Plan Commission members. We had five neighborhood representatives. Those representatives were picked based on where we were seeing the STRs happening at the time. So we had a member from Sanger Heights Neighborhood Association, Brook Oaks Neighborhood Association, Austin Avenue Neighborhood Association, the North Waco Neighborhood Association, and then the West 84 Neighborhood Association. And then we also had five STR operators that were represented on the committee. And then a Baylor representative, and then a Convention and Visitor Bureau Advisory Board representative.
Clint, I'm sorry, quick question. On the neighborhood representatives, did you say the Downtown Waco Neighborhood Association or no?
No, I did not. But actually, the Plan Commission member, one of the Plan Commission members, Andy Lopez, was on there, and he was speaking for the Downtown Neighborhood Association.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
So this, this group met for a period of about six months. We had, I believe, five meetings to really go through the ordinance and then make recommendations to council. And the goals of the committee were to provide clear rules, regulations, and a permitting process for short-term rentals. The, the old ordinance really didn't address some of the issues and concerns that were being arised with the new STRs. And then strike a balance with allowing, potentially allowing these in circumstances in our neighborhoods, but with checks and balances that would provide protection of our neighborhoods from potential negative impacts caused by short-term rentals. And we'll go through those in more detail in a future slide. And then assure assurances that our guests that were coming to visit Waco and stay in these short-term rentals had safe living conditions. And so this group did draft, helped the city staff draft the ordinance and made a recommendation to our Plan Commission and City Council. In fall of, early fall of 2017, and then City Council adopted a new STR licensing ordinance and then made revisions to the zoning ordinance. So it was a two-pronged process. One being the license ordinance, which has regulations and, and process for how short-term rentals are licensed and operated. And then the zoning ordinance defined the different types of short-term rentals and then where they are allowed. And we're going to go through each one of these individually. We'll start off with the licensing ordinance. And so the licensing ordinance has several components of it. And again, it provides assurance that the STR owners and operators comply with all ordinance requirements through an administrative review process. And it includes an application process. So it has requirements of what's needed to submit with your application. And then, you know, as they move forward, there is also a renewal process. So currently, ordinance requires all licenses to be renewed every two years. And then it also allows the city to revoke any licenses if they're not operating in compliance with the license ordinance. And then has a process for, for licensed operators that do get revoked to appeal that to City Council. And we do have zoning compliance, so we'll go through all these. But the zoning compliance makes sure that, that the STRs that we are licensing are compliant with zoning, one where they can be and cannot be allowed. Designated operator requirement. So each STR has to have a designated operator that lives in McClinton County and that is available at all times during the STR rental. And not only to city staff, but part of the, the operator requirements is that they provide a contact number. And we send that out to all the property owners within 200 feet of the STR. So if there is an issue, they can get ahold of that operator directly. You know, a lot of these are rented during the weekend and holidays. So if there's an issue, they can contact the operator directly or contact the city if there's an issue. We also have a distance and density requirements in our residential neighborhoods. Most of, a lot of our STRs have requirement that you can only have one for every 500-foot area. And then some of our multifamily STRs have density requirements where you can only have up to five units in a multifamily building. And there's also some occupancy requirements that are in the license ordinance. They put a limit on how many occupants can be in the short-term rental. It limits it to two per bedroom plus two additional guests. And that's part of the requirements. And then they actually have to put that on a placard that's posted in the rental that has the occupancy limits on it. Parking requirements, we do prohibit parking on public streets. All the parking has to be on the private property, and it has a requirement for one space per bedroom. And then, and then finally, we have life safety requirements. We have an inspector that goes out and inspects all these properties before licenses issued. And they'll, they'll look for things like smoke alarms, ingress and egress, operable windows, those type things, life safety issues to make sure that the property is safe. So to date, since we've approved this ordinance, we do have 219 active licenses. We have a little over 30 that are pending. And then you see 83 are defunct. So we're always having new ones replace ones that go out of operation. Here is a map that shows all the location of our licensed STRs. As you would imagine, the highest concentration is in the core of our, our city, near a lot of our tourism destination sites. You can see the, the blue dots are the STR twos. Those are the most, the dominant ones. About two-thirds of our short-term rentals are STR twos. And then you can see the other types as well. STR threes, which are multifamily buildings typically are around Baylor Campus and then in the downtown area. So you can see concentrations of them. There, there is a high concentration of them around the Magnolia Silos, up and down Fourth and Fifth Street. And then, and what I'd call kind of the uptown area and then the Sanger Heights area. And then there is a concentration of them right around Elm as well. In 2019, we did make some adjustments to our license ordinance. One of the things we did that wasn't part of the ordinance, we contracted with Lodging Revs, which is a third-party STR monitoring company. And they have helped with discovery and monitoring process so we can be more of a, do more proactive enforcement instead of just working off complaints. And so that's helped the city staff determine where these are operating, especially ones that are operating without a license. And we're able to contact them and, you know, walk them through. A lot of them, you know, don't know there's a licensing process. And so we're able to get in contact with them and get them through the licensing process or, you know, go through the enforcement process if they're not complying with the license. We also made some amendments to our ordinance. In 2019, the big one is we extended that buffer rule for the STR twos and bed and breakfasts in our single-family neighborhoods. Originally, it was just for R1B zoning, which is our single-family zoning. But we extended that to the R2 zoning, which a lot of our inner-city neighborhoods have R2 zoning that are, you know, single-family in nature. And then we made some other minor changes to some of the parking requirements. Some of our collecting arterial streets where the STRs are located, we removed the parking prohibition on the streets for those. As I mentioned, we changed the lengths of the license from one-year to two-year. And then on our STR threes, we changed some of the density requirements in our C4 downtown zoning. So here's a map. The, the, the big change was the extension of the buffer requirement into the R2. So this is a map of our central city zoning. And you can see that the yellow areas on our map are the R1B single-family zoning. And you can see the, the little circles are, the dark brown circles are those buffers within 500 feet where you cannot operate another STR. So in 2019, all those orange areas on the map are R2 zoning. But as you can see, the majority of the R2 zoning are single-family neighborhoods. And you have those both, well, up in North Waco, East Waco, and South Waco. And so we wanted to provide that same protection for those neighborhoods that we were doing for the single-family zoning. So all these red-hatched 500-foot buffers were added in 2019. And as you can see, when you start putting all those buffers together, it really does help avoid concentration of STRs in single-family neighborhoods, which was a big concern of the, not only the council, but the advisory committee and staff of not concentrating these that could potentially change neighborhood character and some of the other concerns that you have with too many STRs in an area. So getting into the types of short-term rentals and how we regulate them with our zoning ordinance, we have, we do have five types. The first being bed and breakfast in. Actually, we, we had one, Cotton Palace Bed and Breakfast is no, no longer in operation. But the bed and breakfast in is you do have a property manager that lives on site, doesn't have to be the owner. And you can rent out to up to 15 different groups at a time. So it, it functions more like a small hotel would function. So therefore, it's only permitted in some of our office and commercial districts by right, O3 and Commercial zoning by right. And then by special permit in our multifamily O1 and O2. And, and since we've adopted the ordinance, we have not had any applications for these. The bed and breakfast homestays is more of what you think of as a traditional bed and breakfast where the owner does live on site and then has, you know, different groups that come in and stay with the owner there on site when they're staying. These are permitted by right in our R2 multifamily districts, office and commercial districts, and then permitted by special permit in single-family residential zoning districts. And we've had six approved by, through the special permit process by City Council. And this is an example, one that Spencer House Bed and Breakfast on Call Court Avenue. Short-term rental type one, this is where the, the owner, it is owner-occupied home. And then they just have, they're just renting out either a room in their home or they have a garage apartment. But they are there and present when their guests are there. And you see these permitted by right, again, in our R2 multifamily, office and commercial districts, and then by special permit in single-family. And we have seen 20, 25 total of these through the application process, 23 being approved and then two denied. And then short-term rental type two, these are, make up the majority of the special permit application that council sees. These are single-family residences where the owner does not live on site and rents out the complete house to one group at a time. You know, mainly, these are investment properties. These are permitted by right in our R2 multifamily office districts and then by special permit in our single-family. And like I said, these are the majority of the cases that we see come through the approval process. And since adoption ordinance, we've had 72 approved and then 14 denied. This picture is of the Moro House in Sanger Heights. And, and this was, this is a good example of why we, we set up the process the way we did to allow these types in single-family, you know, if, if they are approved through a special permit process. Because this, this house was in danger of being torn down. It was red-tagged, built in 1880. And the, the owner was able to afford to renovate it because of having the income off of the short-term rental. So this is an example of one that, you know, potentially had benefited the neighborhood that is located in by renovating an historic house that otherwise might be torn down. And then the last type is our short-term rental type three. These are multifamily complexes that have short-term rentals. These are permitted by right in C2 and C4, which is our mixed commercial district and our downtown district zoning. And then they are allowed by special permit in multifamily districts and office zoning. We've had 14 approved and one denied since ordinance adopted. This is a, a new construction. You can see it's got four units all on one property. This is the new one built off of South Night between Webster and Clay. So we, we talked about the special permit process. This is, you know, the system that we set up with our ordinances that has, has a two-step process to go through for, for a lot of special permits, special, especially our STRs in single-family neighborhoods. This was designed to provide an initial level of public input in the approval process. So you do have a licensing ordinance that deals with a lot of the technical issues. But because of the nature of these and the potential impact on neighborhoods, we had this extra process, special permit process that allows that additional input. And y'all have all our Ds, but some of the common themes of our neighborhood input that we see are concerns about neighborhood safety, how it, you know, impacts traffic, nuisances, whether it be trash or noise. We hear a lot of that. The change, potential changes in character that it could potentially change it from a residential area to a commercial area. And then housing availability and affordability, that it can impact not only availability for housing of our local citizens, but also affordability of the housing, especially if you have concentrated areas of these that can drive up housing prices. Some of the observations that staff had seen over the several years we've had the ordinance in place is a, the special permit process does provide that level of additional input, but it is just a snapshot in time. You know, it, it really is, you know, what are, what are those current residents that live there within 200 feet? You know, how, how do they feel about that specific STR? And, and once it's approved, you know, neighborhood dynamics can change. You know, the, the people that live in the areas around the STR can change. So it is just looking at it as a snapshot in time. STRs with similar characteristics can be treated, might be treated differently. You know, a lot of our special permit uses vary quite a bit from different cases. They can be different. They can be different sizes, they can be, uh, different locations on major streets versus residential streets. So usually there's a lot of variables in special permits. And with STRs typically, especially the ones in the neighborhoods, they're, a lot of the characteristics are the same. They're a single-family house, they're usually three or four bedrooms, they have, you know, parking on there, they're in the middle of the neighborhood. And so there is concern that, um, you know, they, they could be treated differently, uh, through a special permit process, um, with similar characteristics. Uh, a lot of the, 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 the concerns that we hear through our special permit process are, are, are already addressed through the requirements of the licensing ordinance, um, whether it be, uh, you know, density requirements or, uh, you know, noise, um, all those different things we talked about in the licensing ordinance address a lot of the concerns that we hear, you know, from the public hearings. And then the process is, uh, somewhat cumbersome and confusing. Uh, you know, we, you know, since we've adopted the ordinance, we've had over 132 applications, which is more than three a month. Uh, and, you know, that goes through, it takes a lot of, uh, not only staff time, uh, but it takes up a, a lot of time of our plan commission and then city council. Um, and so it is, it's, it's somewhat of a cumbersome process. Uh, and then we do hear that, um, input from neighborhoods, especially where you have a lot of, uh, application is that there is somewhat of some input fatigue from the neighborhoods. They're, you know, they're having to voice their opinion every time one of these comes through and it's usually the same opinion. So it, it does, um, cause some, um, fatigue on, on that as well. Uh, and then, um, one of the things we've noticed is the two-step approval process for those that have to go both, both through the special permit process and, uh, the licensing process, it is somewhat confusing for applicants that the ones that go through this special permit process, even though they're given information that it's a two-step process, uh, a lot of them think, once I get approved by council, I'm approved and there's nothing else I have to do. And then we have to work with them to get the licensing done too. So it does, um, complicate, uh, the process a little bit there. Uh, and here, here's a little bit, some data from, um, some of those meetings. You can see, um, of the, uh, 132 cases, uh, we've had, uh, 105 of those, uh, there has either been no opposition or just one comment card, either a comment card or, uh, speaker. And so the, the, the majority of, of the cases that come through don't have, uh, uh, opposition, uh, that come through the public hearing process. Uh, more than one, uh, but don't trigger the supermajority. You can see, uh, there's about 14 of those. And then, uh, about 10%, about 13 of the application have triggered that supermajority requirement, which is that requirement if, if the, the, uh, the owners of the property that oppose, uh, the, the application own 20% of the property within 200 feet, it triggers a supermajority or five out of six votes for approval for city council. And then you can see, uh, how that translates down to, uh, the special permit council decisions. Um, overall, there's been 115 of them approved, uh, 17 denied. Most of those denials have been the STR type twos. Uh, we have, uh, two, uh, STR ones that have been denied and then one STR three. And you can see the 13% denied and that, that 10% supermajority track along, uh, pretty closely. And so typically the ones that have been, uh, denied have had, uh, a lot of opposition to them.
Clint, not to interrupt you, but this might be a detail that's too detailed, uh, that you might not know, but has there ever been a supermajority that has passed?
No.
Okay.
That, that's a good question. Yeah, all 13 of the, uh, supermajorities, uh, have been denied. I believe all of them, uh, well, no, 12 of them, uh, are STR, were STR one, or STR twos, I'm sorry. And then there was one STR one that was denied, that triggered the supermajority.
And along those lines, um, in terms of the STR twos, we've got about, is that 86 on that chart?
Yes, sir.
Of, of those, how many of those were in R1B? Do you know that or have that handy?
Uh, all of them were.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it, yes, sir. Cause if they're in R2, then they're permitted by right and they don't come through the council process.
Okay. So, so that's 86 applications in R1B, of which 14 were denied ultimately by council. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So, uh, so moving forward, um, you know, there, there's three options. We can continue with the two, the current two-step process, approval process with the, the special permit, uh, for, for those that require the special permit, uh, and then the licensing requirement. Uh, this is, uh, the, the most transparent, fair system in, in my opinion for public input. And, uh, you know, so if we want to continue with that, we can. Uh, when we've reviewed other cities' ordinances, this is not very common with cities that have license ordinances. So, uh, most cities have not adopted a license ordinance yet. Uh, we're, we're actually a little bit out ahead of, of most cities, but those that have adopted license ordinances, uh, have, you know, just defined, you know, where these are allowed by right. And then if they're not allowed by right, they're not allowed at all. And there's not a, there's not an approval process through the zoning. It's just a license, uh, approval process. So that, that's definitely one option that we can continue to do. Uh, the other, the other two options would be to remove the STR types from the specially-used categories and just permit them by right and, and use our licensing ordinance, um, you know, to address all, uh, the concerns that we talked about that we come up in the public that are already in there. Uh, but there, there is two different ways that cities have handled these. Uh, one is, um, permit them by right or prohibit them, uh, based on geography. And, uh, example of this is the city of Arlington. Uh, they've defined an entertainment tourism area around their, their two major sports complex and the, the Six Flags and, and Wet n Wild. And so they've drawn a line on the map. And if you're within that area, uh, you, you can do STRs. And if you're outside the area, they're prohibited. Uh, so that, that is, is one way. Uh, Waco's a little bit different than Arlington. Uh, you know, our, our tourism's kind of spread out and then our, our facilities, uh, where people visit, it's spread out. Uh, and then you also have, uh, you know, vulnerable neighborhoods adjacent to some of those tourism areas that, uh, potentially could be impacted by that if you just drew an area and, and allowed them by right. You know, that could potentially impact some of those, uh, you know, you know, ring, uh, neighborhoods from around downtown. Uh, the, the other option, and this is the option that staff would recommend if we do, if, if council decides to give us direction to, to amend the ordinance and not just leave it the way it is, but, uh, to remove STR types by special use section based on zoning. Uh, and so you would either permit them by right, uh, in, in certain zoning districts or you would, uh, prohibit them in, in certain zoning districts. And a couple of examples of that are, uh, the STR ones where you have the, uh, the owner living onsite when, when the, uh, visitors are there, saying, um, saying in the STR, you would allow those by, by right in, in all the zoning districts and residential uses, uh, because you have that protection of the owner being onsite and, um, it, it does, you know, some, what, what we've seen with the input, uh, it, it does have less of an impact on neighborhood character. Uh, some of that, that, uh, housing availability and affordability, actually, a lot of cities see this and, and allow these by right because it, it provides that homeowner with some extra income to be able to afford to live in those homes and those, and then, and those neighborhoods. Uh, and then, you know, the STR twos where you don't have the owner, uh, living onsite when the visitor's there, you would just prohibit those in, in those residential areas and, and just do away with that special use permit. So those, that, that is an option. Uh, and like I said, uh, this would be the, the option that staff would recommend if, if, if we did want to move forward, uh, with, with some sort of changes. All the existing, either one of those options, all the existing licensed STRs would be allowed to continue under any, any one of those options. There's been some, uh, recent court rulings, uh, that, uh, we would need to allow those to continue, uh, if we did change the ordinance. As, as long as they kept their license current, they would be allowed to continue, uh, in, into the future. Uh, and with that, we'll, uh, open it up for any questions, comments and discussion.
Um, Clint, I had a, I had a quick question for you. Well, first, I, I really do value the approach that we've taken. And I think different neighborhoods that have different tastes and different goals. And there's this balancing act, cause we've seen this really preserve history, um, and serve as a, as an income generator for families in need. And then on the other side, there's this balancing act of, you know, changing characters of, of neighborhoods and the character of neighborhoods, uh, as well as potentially causing displacement. And so there, it's a, it's a hard balance to, to strike. I, I had a technical question just to start off with, and I, I look forward to council discussing this in more depth, but could another option be, um, if there's a, um, what traditional, I might not describe this well, but what traditionally is called a, required a supermajority, could that automatically, um, prohibit that from proceeding by right? In other words, could it be a situation where it's by right, um, unless a, a supermajority is triggered, in which case, um, it automatically, it ends that, um, process? Does that, does that make sense? So instead of requiring a supermajority, just closes the file? I'm just saying, and the reason I'm asking that is if 100% of the time those don't move forward, it seems like a lot of work for what seems to be an inevitable outcome. Um, and could that, could that be a scenario that exists?
I think the, the, the problem with that is you would have to have some sort of, uh, you know, petition system. You know, what, once it's in the public hearing process, it's, it's gotta go through the public hearing process. Cause you, you, I mean, as y'all know, we don't usually know about these supermajority triggers usually till, you know, sometimes, you know, minutes before the meeting, um, just because of the nature of how public input works and petitions work. So I, I, I don't, I don't know if you could set up a system where it would just automatically disqualify it. I, I think, you know, again, to, for it to be, uh, transparent and fair, you know, across the board, I, I think if you, if you are gonna have, uh, you know, a, a public input process, that you would need to keep that special permit process.
Okay. I mean, I'm just trying to think what feels, one of the things that feels heavy to me. I, I like our current system, except for the amount of time it takes for us and others. And if we have this kind of 100% of the time when there's a supermajority that gets triggered, it fails, it seems like that's a waste of everybody's time. So I, I would just, just say, I wonder if there's a way to explore that to where, um, I don't know. Uh, it might be worth putting some thought into, to on it, on if there could be something that could be, a system that could be created where if you don't get, and I, I guess on the flip side of that is, you know, how many times do they, without a supermajority, um, do they, do they get denied? If there's not a super, if, if the neighbor, if, if there's not a, a supermajority trigger, how often do they fail? And, um, I'm sure there's an, yeah, yeah. There is a gap there, huh?
There, there is a small one, uh, you know, not, you know, it, it's been, uh, you know, 17, uh, that have been denied and only 13 that have triggered the supermajority. I will say, cause I, I was trying to see what the, the situation was in those others. Uh, three of those other ones had, uh, opposition from the neighborhood association that didn't tri, didn't trigger the supermajority, but there was still neighborhood concern. And, and then the, the fourth one was a, uh, uh, STR type three that, uh, was a condo building that, uh, you know, had, had quite a bit of opposition, but it just did, because there were so many people that lived in that condo, it didn't trigger the 20%.
Yeah.
I, I would say all, all 17 that have been denied have had some sort of, uh, major opposition to them.
Okay. I was just throwing that out there. Thanks.
And we can, we can definitely, I'm sorry, we can definitely look at that a little bit closer to see if that's, uh, a possibility.
This is Holmes. I'll just, um, pivot off of Dylan there a little bit. And when you asked that question, Dylan, I remember, cause I asked that very same question four years ago when we started talking about this. And I saw city attorney Richie shaking her head and I recall she did the same thing to me four years ago because, uh, cause what Clint said, I think you have people coming up, you know, the minute before, uh, the, the meeting.
But if we had a deadline, I mean, not to interject.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, you could have a deadline for this and...
Exactly. That's what I want to pivot into. If there's no opposition, I, I don't really want to look at it, you know? If there's no neighborhood opposition or neighborhood association opposition or neighbor opposition, I'm not sure why it, it comes to council. But, you know, the core of the deal is, I've articulated this many times, you know, if we have, if the city of Waco has single-family zoning, there should be an expectation of that person owning that house of a peaceable, you know, living there without commercial activity going on. So I'm very respectful of people's, you know, right to have a home without a commer, you know, hotel, quasi-hotel, the next door, regardless of how, you know, perfect all these guests are or whatever. Uh, so, but, but if there's absolutely no opposition, I mean, it's like, why are we even looking at it? Uh, unless it like, and, and as, as the mayor just said, maybe you set a deadline of what, however many days before the council meeting or the plan commission meeting that looks at it, um, that, that's when the, the, uh, neighborhood opposition needs to form by then if there is any. But if there isn't any, 75% of these kind of are a rubber stamp situation. And, and again, it would go to what Dylan said, you'd have to set a time period of, of a deadline. If you're, if you are opposed to this, at some point before the city council meeting, you have to articulate it or record it somehow.
Yeah. And we, and we, we can look at that a little closer, you know? Uh, you know, part of the concern is if you, uh, you know, it just, you know, have a requirement that you have to get certain amount of signatures from your neighbors and you don't have it in, you know, a public hearing process or public forum, you start opening up opportunities for people to potentially, you know, not, not approve something based on other factors that, you know, aren't legitimate reasons to oppose it. And, and, and so that, that, that's one of the benefits of having a public, open process is that y'all can, y'all can hear those reasons. And if they're not legitimate reasons, then you can cast them to the side and vote the way you want, want to vote. So, but we can definitely look at it a little closer and to see if there, there is a system where you potentially could have, um, you know, an approval process that wouldn't require, you know, all of them to come through, if there's some sort of, you know, consensus or something from the neighborhood. We'll, we'll look at that a little closer.
Clint, in, in following up with what council member Holmes asked, we did change, um, how we send out the requests, um, for comment to where it includes the owners and the actual address in case we're dealing with people who are renting in that, you know, the neighbors that if they're renting and not necessarily be the owners. We did change that, correct?
No, we, we, we're still just sending them to the owners.
Hmm. So you may potentially not ever hear from the people who are actually the neighbors because they're not getting the mail.
That, that's correct. And, and, and part of the difficulty with that is, is finding, you know, addresses for, you know, cause we, we use the appraisal district, uh, for a mailing list, you know, that has ownership of the, where you have.
Right.
Uh, rental property, sometimes it's a little bit more difficult, especially.
Right.
For multifamily, it's difficult for tenants to find tenants to mail notices to.
Wait, what?
I get that, but you're, if you're sending it to the address of the, the resident, I mean, the, where the property is, why couldn't you just, I mean, even if the number, the, the address on record is not the same, if, if I'm talking about within 200 feet of a particular house, I know where I'm sending it, right?
Yeah. Right. It, it's, it gets difficult where you have multifamily buildings, they get them all to all the units.
I, but, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, council member.
But I'm, but I'm saying, I was like, but it is, if you're, if you're asking for in, input for the neighbors, I mean, I get, you know, if you're in a multifamily thing, but all of those people would have the right for that input, right?
Right. Yeah. I mean, it, it's open to the public. Uh, you know, if that's something that council would like us to look at, we would need to look at changing our ordinance for that. Cause that's about, you know, the, the noticing process is spelled out in our ordinance on how we do that. Uh, you know, we, we follow state law, which just requires the owners, but if council would like us to start mailing, you know, we, we would need to do that for all our public noticing. It, that would something, uh, we would need to look at changing our ordinance to require that.
Well, I, I think for this one specifically, I don't, the, this, uh, stirs up neighbors as much as... Well, I, I think for this one specifically, I don't, this stirs up neighbors as much as any. And I'm sure that, you know, if there's pitfalls that we need to account for, like multi-family, but, and I know that there are many short-term rentals that are in multi-family, but I do know that there's several that aren't as well. So I bet this is something that we could explore.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, that was, council member Bearfield definitely asked one of the questions that I had because I know that that has happened in the past where the homeowner is getting the notice, but not the actual person that's living there. And I have to agree, I think that if we know if 123 Avenue A is applying for an SDR, then the other houses that are within 200 feet, I think, would be accessible to us. And it's just a matter of how we're pulling those addresses, even if it is multi-family, because I would hate to come to a point where we make a change with the ordinance and then an SDR is put in the neighborhood. And because 50% of those houses are rented out and are not occupied by the actual owners, that the actual people that live in the neighborhood would not know that an SDR is going on in their area. So that's one of my big reservations. Another question that I have for you is how many licenses have not been renewed for whatever reason after two years, after the first two years or four years, et cetera?
So we don't have it broken out by which ones just haven't renewed or just stopped, but there's been 83 that are no longer, that, you know, that, that were licensed are no longer active. So either through, they just let them lapse, or they've called us and let us know they're no longer operating.
Okay. What do we do with those STRs that are operating but are not licensed by the city? And how do we find them?
Sure, sure. So that's, that Lodging Revs, that third-party software company has helped us a lot in that. You know, before that, we were really working off complaints because really the only, if you don't get a complaint from a neighbor, the only way to find those is to, to kind of scrape those rental sites like Airbnb and HomeAway. And, and that, you know, a lot of those don't put addresses on there. When you're searching it, it doesn't have the address of where it is. They'll put pictures of it and they'll put a general area, but they won't give the address of the location. So Lodging Revs has really helped us. They provide reports to us weekly of all the ones that are advertising. And then they cross-reference our license list. And so they're able to tell us, you know, these are the ones that are operating without a license. And then we're able to contact them and start the enforcement process through that. And I will say, we, we have been, especially in the last year, a little over a year, the, the number of citations and enforcement notices that we sent out has gone up quite a bit. And that's typically the biggest, we do not get a lot of complaints about, you know, people, operators that are not, not following the rules. It's typically the ones that we're finding are just not, they're not licensed, they hadn't gone through the process yet. So that's been the biggest enforcement issue that we've had to deal with.
Has there, Clint, speaking of that, has there ever been a time where we have revoked someone's license because we have received complaints? And the reason I ask is because not too long ago, there was a complaint made of an SDR that was in operation. They were licensed by the city of Waco, but numerous times they've had gatherings, parties, et cetera, things like that, but they still had their license. So is there ever a point where we tell an SDR or an SDR operator, hey, you no longer can operate as one?
We, we have not revoked a license to date. We've, you know, when we get a complaint, we do an investigation, we'll, you know, call the operator, call the owner, talk through it, you know, sometimes, you know, the case could be that the owner is just having a, you know, their own personal. We've had some where there's been a complaint of a gathering and it's been their own personal gathering, whether it be a, you know, we had one that was a holiday party for their family. Wasn't anybody that was staying at the SDR, so that, that's not a violation of ordinance. Typically, when, when we do get complaints and we address it with it, the, the operators have been very responsive. You know, especially those that, the majority of them are, you know, parking violations where the guests are parking on the streets and not in the parking spaces. So they're able to, we'll follow up with them, make sure they, you know, a lot of times we'll make sure that they'll put that on their material that they provide their, their tenants, you know, that says, make sure you park in the driveway. A lot of them have the cameras where they can, you know, where they can look at it and monitor it themselves. And then so they can see that, hey, one of their guests is parking in the street and they'll be able to contact and say, you have a car in the driveway. So we, we've had pretty good success with those that have had complaints where they followed up and taken action on those.
Okay.
The, you know, the one that, the one where we got the most complaints was not licensed. And so we started issuing citations and, you know, that, if it, if it would have been licensed, that was one that could have been, you know, they were not following up. And certainly was, you know, if they were licensed, could have been revoked.
So do they, does everyone who is not licensed receive a citation? I know you mentioned that, you know, you assist, assist folks in the licensing process because they were unaware of the licensing process. But is it first you receive this citation, then let me help you?
So we, no, we send out a violation notice, it's not a citation, just let them know, you know, you're, you're operating without a license, here's the rules, here's how you get, submit your application for a license. We tell them you have to stop operating until you get that, you know, like either, depending on the process, you've gone through the special permit, but you have to stop operating until you get your license issued. And then if, usually those are 10-day notices. And if they, if they haven't taken action that 10 days, then we start writing citations. And then if they continue to ignore us, we've been writing multiple citations for one property. Every, every week we check it, if they're still not, if they're still advertising, if they're still renting it out and they still had contact to start the process to comply, we write them another citation. And so there, there are several that we're up, you know, getting close to double-digit citations on.
Are they paying the fee?
Some of them are paying the fees, some of them are going through the court system. And, and those that are paying the fees, we've looked at even issuing more tickets because it, you know, they're not complying with the order.
Clint, along those lines, when we have these operators that are not paying, that are operating without a license and they're doing it repeatedly, do we have any sort of a policy that then prohibits them from applying for, for a legitimate license or put like a six-month gap where, you know, you need to go sit in timeout and think about what you did before you get to play in the sandbox with us?
So that, that is something that can be considered, especially during the special permit process. You know, if they're operating in a single-family area, wouldn't happen to go through the special permit process and then the license process. So that is something that could be considered. If there's a, if there's a track record of them not complying with the rules, that is something that can be considered in both the special permit process and the licensing process.
Okay. A couple of follow-up questions. So along those same lines, I know there's a number of like taxes or fees associated with these. If someone is operating an Airbnb without the license, does that mean that they're not paying the, like hotel fees or like the, the taxes that we should be collecting as a city?
Potentially, there are, there's been a lot of cases where they're paying, and I think this is just a little bit of not knowing the process where they're, they're paying, they've been paying the hotel motel tax and just didn't get licensed. And I did forget to mention, that is a part of our renewal process is verification that they are current on their, their hotel motel tax. And we do work with the convention center on that.
Is there a back pay if we find that someone hasn't, like, let's say they haven't been paying those hotel motel fees for six months? Do they back, need to back pay the city for?
Yes, there is a process, like, so if you've been operating without a license and you come in to get your license and you haven't paid your, you know, your back taxes, you would have to pay those to get the license.
Okay. My last couple of thoughts are, I, I really agree with what councilwoman Bearfield said about making sure that this is going to renters too. My husband and I are long-term renters. We've lived in our house or our duplex for three and a half years and know all of our neighbors and are super invested. And so if there were things going on that our landlord that lives in Woodway is voting on or not voting on, that's impacting our quality of life. And I think in District Four, it's like maybe 40% of District Four residents are homeowners. So that's, you know, 60% that are tenants. So I would love to see that applied just across the city. I think that creates more space for our actual residents to have, say, what's going on in their neighborhoods. And then the last thought that I had is looking at that map, it looks super concentrated in the city core. It looks like predominantly in District Four and in District Two, but definitely some in, kind of scattered throughout. I'm wondering, have we considered widening the buffer zone?
That is a possibility. So the 500 feet, I can go to the buffer maps, you can kind of see that, you know, the 500 feet, that, that picks up, you know, a typical block is about 350 feet city block. And so, you know, that picks up a whole city block plus. And so, and, you know, in some of our core neighborhoods where you have the 50-foot wide, 60-foot wide lot, you're picking up about anywhere from 60 to 80, you know, properties, you know, basically just allowing one SDR within a 60 or 80 property area. But that is definitely something that can be looked at. You know, as you can see on this map, as they've, you know, as these have been approved and those buffers have been applied, you know, a lot of these areas where you're talking about where the concentration is are no longer available for new ones. So I mean, you can see where there's overlaps with those buffers there. You know, they're, they're not allowed, they're not available for requests for STRs on those, so.
There is an exception in a certain particular in the city where that's not applicable, correct?
Right. So the buffer only applies to single-family zoning, R1B, and then, you know, the R2 zoning that we added in 2019. And then, so you do have areas of town where you have mixed, you know, commercial office zoning where they're permitted by right, but there's not a buffer requirement. And you see those, you know, mainly, you know, kind of the downtown core, that area around the Silo District. And then there's some up and down Fourth and Fifth that have office zoning, mixed-use zoning, where that buffer does not apply.
Thanks.
Clint, several of us live in neighborhoods that are rather vehemently opposed to these short-term rentals in R1B neighborhoods. And so it seems like the ones we're really concentrated on, as we said at the outset here, that some of Mayor Meeks and council member Holmes' comments touched, touched on were the one, the super majority cases. You know, I share along with my neighbors a pretty strong opposition to STR2s in R1B. That having been said, I realize that there are some R1B neighborhoods that are welcoming these like you suggested in your presentation, where it's investment in the neighborhood. Can you give me that super majority trigger number? And because I have a follow-up question, but if, if a petition is signed that has what percentage of neighbors, is it 80%?
And it's, and I probably didn't explain it very well the first time. It's, it's a little complicated and it's based on state law. So the, if the people that sign a petition or opposition to a case own 20% or more of the land within the 200 feet, that's the trigger. So it's not, it's not a number of people that sign it, it's, you know, how much land that those people that sign it own within the 200 feet. And that, that is based on state law.
Kind of following on Mayor Meek and, well, and first of all, I want to echo that I also support giving renters or current occupants notice of these because I think some of the numbers are a little deceptive because many of us have sat through hearings, whether it be on plan or on council, where there is one or two, and you know if the neighbors knew, they would have turned out a lot bigger. That's definitely true in COVID, but it was also true before. And I don't mean to say there's any lack of diligence on the part of your office in getting the notices out whatsoever. I know that y'all work hard and you do a great job on these, Clint. But, you know, I wonder, and this is not my idea, but it's from a colleague here on our council, but if, if a requirement putting the onus of this onto the applicant in R1B to get a certain percentage of neighbors to sign on in order to, to trigger the public hearing, to get their request to the public hearing process, would that pass legal scrutiny? And is that something that has been entertained yet?
We, we would need to look into that a little closer before we get some feedback. You know, our, our concern has always been that there be a transparent and then fair process that would be across the board. So that, but there, there is potential ways, and y'all make some good suggestions that we would just need to look at closer and give you some feedback on.
Because I do agree, I mean, there's definitely fatigue on our council and among the plan commission, but I think more than that, the neighbors having to come to two rounds of hearings every time a request is made is putting a lot on our citizens in this process.
I would agree with that.
Every time, for example, Castle Heights and Karim Park show up, which they've done multiple times in the past, they're expressing a permanent desire not to have these. It's not related to the particular property. They're saying, in our neighborhood, we do not want this, you know? And so if there is a way to honor that, to keep our neighbors from having to show up time and time again, I don't mind devoting 20, 30 minutes each council session to this. But I mean, I think just the neighbors who are constantly expressing their opinion that in this neighborhood, we do not want this. I mean, there's got to be a way to acknowledge that somehow in the process. And I feel like if we keep searching, we can find it.
And in that vein, you know, just as you have those neighbors who are vehemently against it, you also have neighborhoods, especially in District One and District Four, probably maybe not as much in District Two, that in 200 feet, the lot is vacant. There is no one to speak to that. They may not be interested at all, but if, if there's a vacant lot, then where's the discussion?
Go ahead. And Clint, I just wanted to commend your staff. I mean, you're always a paragon of professionalism, you and everyone in the planning services department. And I know that these have been an immense burden on your office as they have in terms of workload for the public hearings. But thank you for all that you do. Greatly appreciated.
Sure. And I, I think, I think everybody's, you know, when we, when we first approved this ordinance, I think the anticipation was that we would get a bunch of these at the beginning and then they would slowly start to tail off. But what you see, a lot of those with the licenses, we do have a lot of them that aren't in operation anymore, but there's always new ones coming in. Because it is, you know, people look at it as an opportunity, you know, for a business opportunity. And not all of them work, whether, you know, location or the house. Or I think a lot of people realize, once they run these for a while, they're a lot, they're a lot of work to keep up and maintain and operate. And so you see, you see a lot fall off, but there's always new ones coming in to replace them. So it's been a steady, there's been, there's really been no letdown in new applications since we started this process. And y'all, y'all see that every month in your agendas. And I don't think we fully anticipated that when we first, you know, adopted this ordinance back in 2017.
Hey Clint, I will say, I had a constituent reach out to me today about an SDR application that they are doing. They just bragged and bragged on Doris Sandberg how she's been extra helpful in this process. And so I told him that I would pass that. It was just a coincidence that we were talking about STRs today at council that I would pass along the kudos that he was giving her. So I just wanted to share that with you as well.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. She is our SDR license guru. And really, the majority of her time is spent on SDR licensing.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
I just wonder, Clint, what do you suggest next steps are from here?
Well, I think it sounds like there's, there's two items that we need to research and explore more and come back with you, you know, with some options. One is the, the noticing requirement for, for residences, not just owners. You know, we will need to look how, you know, not only, you know, how that impacts the noticing processes, You know, we will need to look how, you know, not only, you know, how that impacts the noticing processes, but, you know, we do have very, and I do think this, that is an important thing to do, but we do have very tight timelines, you know, with our application. We've tried to whittle down the timing of that process as much as we can. And we just need to see how that would impact workload and the timing of getting the notices out, you know, where people can have time to review them and get their comments in. And then also just resources, you know, if it's going to be more notices, we need to look at, you know, how that impacts our total application process. So we'll definitely look at that and bring you back some recommendations on that. And then we need to look at closer, you know, is there a way to process, you know, applications where you can get, you know, maybe the process is more limited for areas where there is consensus, you know, from some sort of neighborhood input without going through the full special permit process? Is there a way to approve these without going through that process? If there's a way to get consensus? And so we'll look at that a lot closer and bring, bring recommendations on both those items to you.
This is Holmes, one last time. Clint, yeah, I appreciate all the work you did and I like how you're thinking about this and all the work you did, you know, a few years ago. But one of the options you put out there, which I still see as difficult to get behind, is the owner occupied, that is somehow to make that by right. And I still, I still find that problematic because as I think about owner occupied, they may be gone. Because the concept of, the beautiful concept is, you know, they're upstairs sleeping. Well, they're downstairs, you know, doing whatever. And really, they're in, you know, Vegas for a week and they're not really on site, which is, I think, the intent of the level of comfort. Anyway, and I'll say this again, I've said it, I guess, 100 times. I think where we have, where the city has put a single family zoning out there, we need to have a level of rigor for anybody who wants to put a hotel-type business, commercial business in the neighborhood. And again, we have to repeat this a lot to people. You can rent it month to month to whoever you want to, for as long as you want to. But when you go night to night, it's a different, it's a different animal. And it crosses over to people who bought a house and invested in that neighborhood. It's not what they, it's not what they invested, it's not what they expected. Anyway, I appreciate your work on it. And yes, if we can continue to clean this up, and on top of that, it's a moving target. I mean, it's, as you say, how people felt a couple of years ago about it may evolve, affected by the market, you know, as we're going to have more hotel rooms online in the coming years, so that's going to affect a little bit too. So, and then as our tourism, if our tourism continues to grow, you know, we'll need to figure out how to accommodate these as well. Anyway, I just wanted to, again, express, let's put a level of rigor in it when it's in a single family neighborhood. And then just, yeah, appreciate your work on all this, Clint.
And that is a good point. It is a quickly evolving industry. And so, you know, we are tasked with trying to keep up with that. And I would add just, you know, one more level of complication is there is some legislation at the state that's been introduced to preempt cities' rights to regulate these. So we will have to keep an eye on those as they go through because that would completely change the dynamic of what we do currently. And so we'll keep an eye on those as well.
Any other questions or comments for staff? I think it's been said already, I think there's a balancing act here because I think that, you know, I'm not, personally, I'm not comfortable with prohibiting an R1 altogether right now. Just because we do have, right now, you know, there's some neighborhoods that want this and need this. I think that the historical preservation that comes from that, the income generation that comes from that, where it makes good sense. But then there's other areas where that doesn't. So I appreciate continuing to take your creative look at that and kind of exploring some of these options. And again, just trying to make sure that we protect staff time to the extent we can. So really appreciate it, and thanks for your time, Clint.
Yeah, thank you all for your input. Very helpful.
All right, Mayor and Council, our next work session is 2021-129. It's a discussion of our comprehensive annual financial report, what we'll refer to as the CAFR for fiscal year ending September 30, 2020. You know, each year, our staff really works for months to finalize this document and ensure that our annual financial results are audited by an independent third-party firm. This year's CAFR, and actually every year since 2008, is available for viewing and downloading on our city website under the Budget, Finance, and Audit Department. Today's presentation, we're joined by Dana Ward with James Rittmeyer Boyd and Thurl, and she'll be discussing the annual audit with the council. I do, while she's getting her presentation ready, I do want to thank the finance team, particularly Janice Andrews, for her leadership on this item. Diana? Well, I think you may be on mute.
This again, hello, thanks, Bradley. I am pulling up my screen so I can share, let's make sure I get the right one. And I have it. Can y'all see that now? Can y'all see it? Okay, great. So it's nice to be with you again. We have finished the audit, as Bradley mentioned, and we have met with the Budget and Audit Committee. So we've gone over it in quite a bit of detail. And so my presentation to you today will be very high level. We'll talk quickly about the audit scope and the results. We will cover some financial observations that we've done. And as part of the audit, we do look at internal control. And because you receive federal and state funding, there are some compliance reporting requirements that we'll go over. Just a reminder that the financial statements are the responsibility of management, the CAFR that Bradley referred to, and that you engage us to conduct the audit in accordance with professional standards. And because the city receives federal and state funding, we also follow government auditing standards. These are the opinion units of the city, and they are the same that they've been in the past and have not changed. And then this is just a slide telling you a few of the procedures that we performed in the course of the audit. We do assess accounting principles and we evaluate the overall financial statement presentation of the CAFR. So I'm happy to report to you that the audit has been finished. We've issued our opinion. It's a clean opinion, unmodified opinion, that states the financial statements do present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city as of September 30th, 2020. As I mentioned, because the city receives federal and state funding, we do do, we perform procedures to test compliance with direct and material compliance requirements to make sure the city is following those. And again, as a result of our audit procedures, we've issued a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, that stated the city complied in all material respects with direct and material compliance requirements applicable to its federal, major federal and state programs for the year ended September 30th, 2020. As I mentioned, there are some financial highlights we want to look at. This is your net position for your governmental and business-type activities. What we're looking for are healthy trends here, and what you see on the slide are healthy trends. Just a comment that your increase in business-type activities was impacted by the termination of W Mars. The city now recognizes 100% of the operations of W Mars rather than the approximately 80% that it was recognizing in the past. Of course, we want to look at the general fund. General fund ended the year in a healthy position at $92.1 million in fund balance. Again, we're looking for trends here, and this is a positive trend for the fund balance. So overall, fund balance for the general fund is at $92 million. The components of that are listed on this slide. The non-spendable is mainly inventories of $1 million. You have restricted fund balance of almost $1.5 million for municipal information. You've committed almost $14.5 million for economic development incentives. And then, as you can see, there was a change in management philosophy to start utilizing the assigned fund balance. And then they've utilized approximately $7.9 million for the suspension bridge during the course of the year. And then you can see unassigned fund balance for the general fund ended at $48 million. And in accordance with the change in management philosophy, there is a new policy now. We want unassigned fund balance to be at least 28% of next year's budgeted revenue. And so for September 30th, 2020, that $48 million actually represents 33% of budgeted revenues for the next year. And so, again, because this is a new policy, we're going to start collecting data and we'll review this trend every year with the council. Our next slide reviews budget versus actual for the general fund. Overall, the city was in a positive place regarding revenues. They were to the good for sales tax for during the year. And then also, the city was able to receive $7.4 million in grant revenues from the Treasury grant. For expenditures, the city expended 92.4% of its budget. So that gave you an overall revenue over expenditures of 24 points, almost 24.4 million. And just a reminder, that does include $7.4 million from that US Treasury grant, which is a one-time influx into the general fund. And so other sources and uses were in line with budget. So overall, fund balance increased 4.7 million. But again, as a reminder, there's $7.4 million in there that came from that one-time Treasury grant. For the major enterprise funds, internal policies require that working capital to revenues equal or exceed 30%. The city's reporting working capital to revenues of 62% for the water fund, 74% for wastewater, and 65% for solid waste. This is in accordance with what's reported in the GAAP, in the CAFR. The city internally removes cash available for capital expenditures, and so internal ratios are a little bit lower than what's reported based on the CAFR. As I mentioned, we do look at internal controls. I'm happy to report to you that there were no material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting. We had no findings related to internal controls for your major federal and state programs. And then there were no instances of material non-compliance that I needed to report to you. So those are my prepared remarks for you as a council. If there are any questions or comments, I'll be happy to take those.
Hey Diana, this is Hector. Sorry, sorry, Mayor. Thank you so much, Diana, for the presentation. I will say, I love hearing the words unmodified opinion when it comes to our audit. So thank you so much for that. And also want to congratulate, as City Manager Ford mentioned earlier, Janice and her wonderful team, under the direction of Paul Kane, our Assistant City Manager. And so just another great report and to show you the, how fiscally responsible our city has been. So thank you, Diana, for that.
This is Holmes, I'll kind of echo Hector there. Just, Diana, I appreciate the presentation and the good news of a clean, unmodified opinion. Always, always music to my ears. And also on the internal controls, no findings, that's, that's great. And then just, you know, the gist of the data and the information, great trends, strong balance sheet, strong reserves, our unassigned is at an all-time high. And the major enterprise funds are in pretty, are in excellent shape. So I'm pleased with how staff and this council has sort of kind of brought this to a very good place for the citizens here. Thanks, Diana.
Any other comments? I just want to thank you, Diana, and thank our staff. It's such a, I'm just so thankful that we're a part of a city where we do get such a positive report from you. And that's a testament to not only your good work, but also our city staff's strategic planning and good work that they've done. So thank you to the staff. I know that this is really hard work to ensure that we're in this position year after year. But it's, it's critical. And I'm just thankful that we can always rest assured that these are the kind of reports that we can expect from you. So thank you so much.
Well, and it's a team effort. As you said, Paul, Janice, the staff, all the departments of the city are, it's a team effort for them to run the city as efficiently as they do and to stay within budget. You know, I'm sure everybody gets tired of hearing about that. But it's a key control for the city as a whole.
Excellent, thanks so much. Bradley, is that all of this work session?
Yes, sir, that's the end.
Great, all right, thanks, Diana. Are there requests for any future agenda items?
I would imagine this is coming at some point, but would love to request that we have an informal report once we have the after-action plan conducted, sharing the insights and future plans for what we learned and what we want to do differently going forward.
In conjunction with that, I think it'd also be helpful as a future agenda item to get an update on recovery efforts and what we've not only done, but what we're doing with regards to recovery efforts. I saw a press release earlier today. And so I know our EOC is hard at work and doing a great job, but I think that that's something that we need to continue to communicate and would like an update on as well. Very good. Okay, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the City Secretary at 5:07 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Two, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. And three, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074. A, Senate Manager Bradley Ford. B, City Secretary Esmeralda Hudson. C, City Attorney Jennifer Ritchie. And D, Municipal Court Judge Christopher Taylor. We are now in executive session at 5:07 PM.